I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of GAZA Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So when we're looking to build this location, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister. So I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum. But I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated. A place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger. And a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home. And there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first regularly scheduled Town Council meeting for 2024. Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everyone had a little bit of a break. Just a reminder, the Town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. It is our privilege to be here. Just one housekeeping item, because we do have some folks here. I know that last time there were folks here, they asked if they could film, which you absolutely can. I would ask that you maybe not come behind council, it's a little unnerving if someone's running behind.
I did ask.
You did. I didn't think you meant coming all the way back, but you can film, and the meeting is livestreamed as well. And also recognizing that I thank everyone here is here for one specific topic that was our last item on the agenda. We've moved it to be our first item on the agenda. You can still sit through the next two hours, because we are, because we love it, but you don't have to. So with that, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Here in none, motion to approve the agenda circulated, councillor Taylor seconded by deputy mayor Frigida. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Are there any announcements from members of council? It's been a quiet few weeks. This is a very big birthday year for the town, 125 years. There will be lots going on, so I do anticipate as we start to ramp back up with our regular meeting schedule, we'll have lots of announcements. I would strongly encourage folks to be following the Town of Bridgewater's Facebook page. That's where, well, essentially, all the events will be at least showcased. There's theater production coming up at the Disberze Museum. There's going to be music throughout the year. I know Donna, our Economic Development Officer, has got grand plans for many things. Of course, this summer there'll be more musical on the Riverbank and things like that. So all in the name of our 125th anniversary, so yeah, exciting. Anything else from council? Here in none. This would be the time, if there are any members of the public that wish to address council, this is the time for that. I don't know if anyone has any presentations they wish to make? No? Okay. And then we have the minutes from November 27th, regular council meeting, and the December 11th, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions with those? Here in none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes circulated? Councillor Colkin seconded by councillor McDonald. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. So we will go down to Business Horizon Unfinished Business, and that is the proposed Town of Bridgewater Gaza statement. So if you'll just indulge me, I will read the statement, and then council can make a motion as it sees fit. "At the December 11th, 2023, meeting Bridgewater Town Council, we receive informal request from a delegation asking the town right of life with Prime Minister Justin Trudeau to request the federal government call for the immediate ceasefire in Gaza, the release of all hostages, and the flow of humanitarian aid. Since that time, Town Council has received additional correspondence requesting similar statement be issued. On December 12th, Canada, Australia, and New Zealand called for a sustainable ceasefire, the unconditional release of all remaining hostages, and the safe and unimpeded humanitarian access into Gaza must be increased and sustained. The Town of Bridgewater supports the position of our federal government in hopes that peace, a lasting cessation of fighting, along with the delivery of aid to the region, materializes quickly. The Town of Bridgewater does not have geopolitical or foreign policy information or expertise. Our community, like all municipal and provincial governments in Canada, relies on the federal government, their diplomats, data, and the entire departments related to foreign policy matters to represent Canada and Canadian interests. Recognizing this, the Town of Bridgewater's position is that wherever there is conflict, we want peace, an end to needless, and an end to needless loss of life and human suffering. On the specific conflict happening in Gaza right now, Town of Bridgewater supports the Canadian, Australian, New Zealand statement of condemnation of Hamas's October 7th, 2023 attack on Israel, support for Palestine's right to self-determination, and a permanent end to fighting on both sides so that aid can begin to safely flow, and partners working collaboratively towards a two-state solution where Israelis and Palestinians can live securely within internationally recognized borders. Town Council also reiterates that our community is a welcoming, diverse place for all people, and that celebrating what makes us different is just as important as what makes us similar. There is no place for any kind of hate or prejudice in Bridgewater, and we must continue to work in supporting and lifting each other up, not tearing anyone down." So that is the draft statement. What is the wish of council? Councillor Colkin, yes?
I move that Town Council, for the Town of Bridgewater, approve the statement as presented in document number 24-195B, and in response to a request from South Shore Ceasefire Now in Colleen for a ceasefire in Gaza.
Seconded by councillor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. All right. And thank you for your correspondence and showing up to council, two meetings in a row. It's never easy to, you know, lads are busy, so I do appreciate, always appreciate when members of the public express themselves respectfully and show up to council meetings to do so. We are down to our next item, which is a new staff position. Welcoming, very welcome, Connor. So turn that over to Nick.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. So staff recommend that council appoint Connor McQuarrie as a development officer for the town, as is required by the Municipal Government Act, so that Connor can administer the land use bylaw and subdivision bylaw of the town. Also take this opportunity to introduce Connor to council. Connor's been with us since late November. He brings some good experience, in my mind, the right skills, to fulfill the duties of a development officer. He's also working as a planner for the town, so sort of a dual role. He brings his delightful exuberance. And he's a very welcome addition, so we're very pleased to have Connor join us at the town. Hopefully for many years to come.
I'd just like to say hi to all the members of council, and I'd like to thank everyone for having me at the town.
Well, welcome aboard. You're part of a great team. We know how you hit the ground running. We're talking about my head and you're busy. And I'm sure Nick is very grateful to have an additional person on his team, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments from council? No? Can't remember who we gave the tough questions to. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, please. I'm with the Town Council, the Town of Bridgewater, in accordance with section 243 I of the Municipal Government Act, appoint Connor McQuarrie as a development officer, a term of his employment with the Town of Bridgewater.
Seconded by councillor McDonald. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 7.2 is first consideration for the C7, C8, MPS, and LEV amendments.
All right. This process includes proposed amendments to the neighborhood commercial C7 zone and the special commercial C8 zone. It is staff-led. It is staff-led, which means that there is no application for a property owner from a property owner or any specific developments currently proposed for the properties in question. This evening's first consideration of the proposed amendments represents Part 1 of the process. Part 2 will occur later this winter. In this presentation, I'll be discussing redesignations and rezoning. So before getting into this more, I wanted to outline what these terms mean and how this works. The town has a municipal planning strategy, or MPS, and a land use bylaw, LUV. The MPS is a policy document that outlines how council envisions the town to develop. It has a future land use map, which separates different areas of town into different designations. So generally, what type of development is envisioned where. So if there's an application to change a designation on a property, this is called a redesignation. The LEV is more detailed. It conditions development to ensure the MPS policies are followed by including regulation, such as what uses are permitted where, how much parking is required, what setbacks are required, and much more. It has a zoning map, which separates all properties into different zones, which have different rules. If there's an application to change a zone on a property, this is called rezoning. And a rezoning has to follow the designation on the property as outlined by the future land use map. If it doesn't, not only would a rezoning be required, but a designation would be required as well. A redesignation, sorry. So the C7, C8 zones. This process is focused on the neighborhood commercial, or C7 zone, and the special commercial, or C8 zone. The C7, C7 zone aims to provide opportunities for limited commercial uses in residential areas that are convenient for people living in a short walking or cycling distance. The C8 zone aims to permit existing commercial uses in residential areas with restrictions in place to limit their growth. This is because some of the uses are not necessarily compatible with residential areas, or the area doesn't make sense for commercial. Both of these zones are part of the limited commercial designation of the future land use map. For this process, staff are looking at alternatives to the restrictive development permissions of the C8 zone. We do this, to do this, we're looking at redesignating and/or rezoning these properties for a change to either a residential zone or the neighborhood commercial C7 zone. Perhaps in the end, removing the C8 zone altogether, as is intended by policy. This process also includes a review of the neighborhood commercial C7 zone, looking at adding more uses and updating the regulations to provide more opportunities for businesses and residents in a manner conducive to the nature of the properties in question. There are 18 properties in town that has its own special commercial, C8. At this time, staff are proposing to rezone four of those properties to the C7 zone and proposing to rezone the rest to residential. Staff have split this application into two parts. This evening is only for the first part. First part focuses on those four properties that are proposed to be rezoned, C7. The amendments to the C7 zone provide more opportunity for redevelopment, and also one other property that is proposed to be residential. As mentioned, the next round will be done in the near future, and it will focus on the remaining C8 properties and residential zone alternatives. This map shows all the C7, C8 properties in town. It's a little hard to see because the map shows the entire town, because these properties are spread across town. The red is C7, and the blue is C8. As mentioned, though, we will be only discussing some of the C8 properties this evening. The public participation meeting was held on October 18th, 2023. Eleven members of the public attended. There was some good discussion, including property owners at 324 Aberdeen Road who spoke in favor of the proposed changes. They suggest that the current zone, C8, has worked well. And the proposed designation and zone, R3, comprehensive residential, appears to work for redevelopment options. There were some questions regarding timeline for this and subsequent processes that they may be interested in. There was discussion among attendees concerning what may be planned at 324 Aberdeen Road and 969 King Street. There were questions regarding what would happen after approval, should council provide such? Do developers make plans, and are there applications? The answer is yes. And there were questions regarding the origin of these proposed amendments. Neighborhood commercial C7 zone. The neighborhood commercial C7 zone is intended to provide limited commercial uses to serve residents in a short walking or cycling distance. It caters to the immediate residential area around those properties. The zone focuses on creating walkable areas with more destinations that are still in keeping with the residential zone and area. It doesn't permit larger-scale commercial uses. So this map shows current properties, Zone C7. You see they're scattered around town. Properties adjacent to HB Studios on Glen Allen Drive, owns lot 200. Fresh cuts on King Street. Hidden beauty hair salon on King Street, that's at 969. Pelletons Convenience Store on King. Big properties at the corner of Victoria Road and York Street, near Brookside Cemetery, and part of a property on St. Philip's Street. Currently, the C7, the neighborhood commercial, C7 zone permits the following uses. One-two unit dwellings. Home-based businesses, subject to some conditions, such as maximum size up to 350 square feet. Residential conversions up to three units, and that's if the main structure was constructed prior to August 27th, 1975. And then other developments, other uses permitted through the cycling approval and/or development agreement process, those come with conditions attached, that is neighborhood grocery and convenience stores, offices, personal service shops, three- and four-unit dwellings with at least 70% ground floor commercial, and restaurants, but no drive-through or takeout. The proposed amendments that staff are considering, and that we ask council to consider, include, well, they include provisions around properties that can't be on dead-end streets. They include takeouts with restaurants. We are proposing to add commercial uses limited by size, including retail, craft workshops, dog grooming, dressmaking, tailoring, galleries, and studios. Staff propose reducing setbacks, reducing parking requirements, and streamlining the process. So the application process would be streamlined by removing the requirement for development agreements for most permitted uses. The idea is that there are enough criteria and parameters in place to maintain a more residential-friendly commercial use, and we won't need extra requirements through a development agreement process. Special commercial zone. Was created to let existing commercial uses remain in residential areas. was created to let existing commercial uses remain in residential areas with restrictions in place to limit their growth. It is very specific. Land use bylaw includes a detailed commercial use that's permitted for each property. The intention behind restricted nature is because these uses are potentially not suitable for residential areas. They've been grandfathered through, through this zoning. And policy states that these properties should be rezoned for the future land use map when possible or when the current authorized use is discontinued. Some of these properties approved challenging and created issues for property owners. So a few years ago, some additional commercial uses were added to the land use bylaw, which would be permitted by the development agreement process. These were added to make it easier for people to repurpose the buildings and properties while still supporting the policy that intends to see these properties become residential all the time. Current permissions of the C8 zone include one, two unit dwellings. That site's specific commercial use, some expansion permission through development agreement. Again, home-based businesses, those come with conditions, residential conversions, main structures constructed prior to August 27th, 1975. So that is up to three units, that's one additional unit. And then by development agreement, multi-year residential, it's a four units per acre. Inns in existing structures built prior to 1975 as well. And then craft workshops, dog grooming, dressmaking, tailoring, galleries, household repair services, offices, personal service shops, retail sales and studios. Those were those additional uses a couple of years ago that were permitted by the development agreement process. That was done through amendment at that time. The proposed amendments. So these are the five, these are the five of the eighteen properties that are included in the first part of the process. This shows their current or last authorized use. Proposed zone for the property. The current designation, what's outlined on the future land use map. And the proposed designation. The green shows the residential designation. Designations and the blue are commercial. As you can see, four of the five are proposed for rezoning to the neighborhood commercial C7 zone. The other being 324 Aberdeen Road, which is the Aragón Inn. Is proposed for rezoning to the comprehensive residential, R3 zone. The property 324 Aberdeen Road is unique as it comes, as it relates to the rest of the special commercial zone properties and presents a good opportunity for residential development. All but one of these properties would require a redesignation as well as the rezoning. 209 High Street, the SoShore Nursery, commercial plaza. Does not because it is already designated limited commercial. For the other four, the proposed zone doesn't fall under the current designation, so the designation would need to change. There are various reasons for the proposed zones chosen for each property. We are considering the current uses, the location in town, proximity to residential properties, access by sidewalk and the type of building that currently exists. For some more context, I'll go over the properties from the chart. 324 Aberdeen Road is the Aragón Inn. Shown on the last slide, proposed new zone is comprehensive residential, R3. 287 King Street is where the Cobbler Corner formerly operated. There is now a DA, development agreement in place permitting retail and a personal service shop. The proposed new zone is neighborhood commercial, as it is for the, the rest of these. 101 Victoria Road is the Mo Monuments, Monuments, located across from Brookside Cemetery at the corner of Victoria Road and Queen Street. 261 York Street is where Landals Plumbing and Heating used to be and is also across from Brookside Cemetery along York Street. And 209 High Street is the commercial building that contains businesses like Laundromat, retail. As mentioned, this property has an existing development agreement, so there are already existing additional uses that can continue even with the rezoning. These properties are approved by council this evening. There would be some changes to note. Existing uses and buildings on the properties could remain. If not among permitted developments in the new zone, those uses would become legal non-conforming. Basically, those would be permitted to continue, subject to provisions outlined in the municipal government act. Any proposed change of use would need to align with the permitted developments or permitted uses in the C7 zone as amended. Or in the instance of 324 Aberdeen Road, the R3 zone. Importantly, a rezoning can only be considered if the site meets all the lot size and zone standards for the zone sub, or the new zone. This was considered and in some ways helped to influence the new zone standards, the proposed zone standards, i.e. setback requirements proposed for the neighborhood commercial zone. I'm going to skip that. So in summary, staff are recommending amendments to the C7 zone, neighborhood commercial, to provide modest enhancements and rezonings and/or redesignations for five of the current properties located in the special commercial zone. And it is therefore recommended that town council give first consideration of the proposed map and text amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw and schedule a public hearing for February 12th, 2024.
Thank you. And questions from council? Councilor Caldwell?
Regarding the, the changes to the handful of properties that would be affected immediately or on this first stage, are any of those property owners opposed to the changes?
Nope, not that I'm aware of. So we had that public participation meeting. A few of the property owners did attend and there had been conversations, especially early in the process. Staff reached out to each of the property owners to discuss the potential changes to their property based on the zoning. At this point in time, I'm not aware of any concerns from those property owners of this, this first set, these five properties.
Regarding the, so changes to C7. So a couple of, a couple of the possible uses that are included there are clinics and grocery. So I'm just wondering about the, I guess the potential size of those because I think of, say, I think of the medical clinic in Ludenberg. There's a lot of, a lot of parking and issues with the side streets there. And also like Fresh Cuts wouldn't go just, couldn't go just anywhere in the zone. It could, could cause problems in certain areas. So I'm just wondering about that, about the scope and size, something like that.
Right, yeah, so those commercial uses. So you have single unit dwellings, the two unit dwellings, and these are the proposed permitted uses in the C7 zone. Those would remain, the home-based businesses, the residential conversions. By site plan approval, which is really just dealing with the site and, and how it functions and landscaping and that sort of thing, sort of water management. We are proposing the clinics, craft workshops, that sort of thing. There is no size, there's no maximum size associated with clinics, along with craft workshops, dog grooming, dressmaking, tailoring, galleries and studios. Neighborhood grocery convenience stores would be capped at 2,000 metric, 200 square meters, which is 2,153 square feet. So it would be around 2,000 square feet would be the maximum size for the neighborhood grocery convenience store. That's the existing maximum size. It's actually permitted through the same process to the same size in the existing permitted developments, so that's not changing. What's really changing is the introduction of clinics and that sort of thing with no cap to the floor area. Cafes are being capped or proposed to be capped as well as retail, but not clinics.
Other questions? Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, I can see that our three is on up on 324 Aberdeen because it's certainly, that's what it is now. There's really no change to it because it's basically what it is, is housing units. It was a motel and restaurant for a while, but it hasn't been here in years. And the other ones, Pat and I have already asked you the question about the ownership of the building, properties, is the owners in agreement with it? Which I think is important, that it's part of the process, any way to get a true understanding of where we're going and what effects it will have on the existing business, so I will support that.
Other questions?
Yes, so I know the purpose of the public hearing will be to invite the neighbors within a certain range of those, would that take place?
There's no notification requirement, a direct notification through letter or otherwise for neighbors. There are ads placed in the paper. We'll do the notification or the announcement on, on our social media.
It's different than a public participation meeting where neighbors are.
That would be a public participation meeting, which we do do. Yeah, and we notify neighbors, all of, of the five properties in question. Neighbors within 100 feet of those subject properties, so they were given opportunity to, to speak, to, to attend the public participation.
So just going back to Councilor Caldwell's concerns before, so if you have a clinic in one of these locations, you know, and the example you gave is quite accurate, right? Lots of coming and going and traffic in, in the one in Ludenberg. In what could be similar neighborhood here, how do we avoid a similar? Do we have provisions to avoid a similar situation? Or we just don't foresee that being the same based on the locations where they are?
Yeah, we didn't consider it in the same light as, as retail. And, and you know, so with retail, you have a lot of people coming and going. That would be the idea with retail or the hope that there is quite a bit of traffic generated for that use. But as I was answering your question, I was, I was thinking that, or recognizing that, that clinics could possibly move into that same category because of the potential traffic generated from those types of uses. I, I understand and agree with what, what you said and the example that you gave. So it could be moved and/or just conditioned so that there is a maximum floor area associated with clinics like we are proposing for retail sales for the same reason. You know, clinics, they, they, they often function like offices, but they are more than that. They are, there's consultation given. So there are appointments that are being made and people coming and going from those types of uses. So to not cap the size could create a nuisance to that, that surrounding area, which is generally speaking, very residential in nature.
Are there parking requirements for those uses? Like would that address some of that concern?
There are parking requirements. And so the parking requirements, sorry. Oh, sorry. So minimum parking requirements are proposed to be waived for the neighborhood commercial zone, for all new developments. Such as they are for commercial development currently in the C1 zone, so it's included in that provision. So the proposals to waive parking requirements and leave it up to the property owner to figure out and include as many parking spaces as, as they see fit. We're not putting a maximum on the number of parking spaces, but we're not requiring them.
Councilor Tanner?
Nick, I apologize, I was trying to seek it out in the documentation. What's the definition of a clinic?
Oh, a clinic is, they're going to test me.
Sorry.
No, I, I should, I should have it with me, but.
Let me, I could be direct. Let me, would it include an addictions clinic?
Yes. It's basically offices where consultation can be given, advice and consultation can be given.
So if you had like 10 health professionals, each seeing 10 clients, but then have another 10 clients waiting. And then as those 10 go, 10 more come in, you could at any given moment have 30 vehicles turning over, so I do, I do wonder if, if limiting the size would at least, would address that, if that's the mechanism is limiting the size. Kind of don't want to, we need more, but at that same time, recognizing that it's in a neighborhood that, you know, if it was, I'm just, I'm just throwing out 30 cars. I don't know if it could be 10 cars or it could be 50 cars, but the, the coming and going could be quite disruptive, Councilor.
Yeah, I was going to say, I just have some worries about that and also grocery, which I realize grocery is permitted now, but with, could we, could we require parking for certain uses or? Like I see, I foresee the clinics and grocery being potentially problematic depending on where they were. You could have a lot of parking in areas where it's not really designed to handle that much parking. So I don't know if that's something that would satisfy council or if that's something we could explore.
The proposed amendment with respect to parking, still need to waive parking requirement for this zone, but then we could exclude.
Certain uses, yes.
Uses within that provision, so could be that parking is waived for the C7 zone excluding neighborhood grocery convenience store and clinics, if, if that's the wish.
Councilor Thorburn?
Following that discussion, those locations, is there a lot sized that's conditioned to what they want to try and do? I mean, the lots are, it doesn't, don't look like they're that big that you can have a big project on those lots anyway? They're not that big, according to my understanding.
They, they are. Certainly 101, or the Mo Monuments, Victoria Road property, 101 Victoria Road is, is very small.
Landals is small.
Landals would be of, of those four, I think Landals.
Probably the biggest.
It, it has pretty good area. So yeah, that's a, the big consideration or a potential concern for that property. Definitely parking is, and making sure there's enough, considering the size of the property.
Other questions or comments? Someone prepared to make a motion? Oh, sorry.
Just, just for clarity, if, if council wishes to make a change to exempt the waiving of parking from those two uses that were referenced, medical clinic or clinic and grocery, that should be done before you give first consideration?
Yeah, before the public.
So you could, you could say as presented with the revisions to require parking per the land use bylaw for clinics and groceries? Could just add that on to the end of the motion?
And Councilor Thorburn, you had a question?
I'm going to make the motion.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so did you, if, if parking is the, is a concern, which I've heard a few folks, then the CAO's, you know, note to add that to the end of the motion.
Or before we, there's two parts to that motion. One is saying to approve the amendments. C7 and special commercial C8 zone in the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw as presented with revisions to require parking for clinics and grocery. And then schedule a public hearing.
Councilor Tanner?
I would suggest it's a bit of a slippery slope going down that path, only because, you know, then you start thinking about, well, personal service shops, I've seen personal service shops that are extremely busy and have, have just as much flow potentially. So I think it's a bit of a, like we're trying to make things cleaner and I just, I, I don't know what the solution is honestly, but I don't, I'm excluding those two alone, I think might be a problem going forward for councils, future councils.
If I may. So there was also the, the suggestion that, that clinics be capped on the, on the, on the floor area. So currently with the proposed zone permissions, personal service shops would be capped at that 200 square meters in floor area, along with retail sales and neighborhood grocery convenience stores. So if clinics were also capped at 200 square meters, which is around 200, 2,000 square feet, it's not huge. Then that may mitigate the parking concerns just by virtue of, of having less floor area, less. by virtue of having less floor area, less of a.
Becomes self-limiting.
Yeah.
I don't disagree that, like, if you're trying to clean it up, then adding more doesn't clean it up. But. I don't like the uncapped. I think that, I think, I think you were correct, that having it uncapped means it can just. Yeah, it can be huge with those issues. So if some of them are, isn't it easier just to add those to that? This is me looking at you for your wisdom.
It really depends. I mean, there's always going to be examples of buildings, like, I would suggest fresh cuts. I don't know what the floor area of that is, right? But really.
It's much larger than what is.
When you're allowing, okay, yeah.
And would be permitted for these types.
So do you have an example of what 2,000 square foot building would be comparable to? Just to give an idea?
Well, I will say that fresh cuts is nearing 4,000.
4,000, so double. Okay, so half the size, yeah.
Well, to play devil's advocate too, if you, if you were to open a business and not provide parking, you might not have the customers, right? Right? They just, if they can't park, they're not gonna go. So if fresh cuts didn't have parking, I wouldn't go with fresh cuts, I guess, to flip that around.
Luckily, they have plenty.
They have lots of parking, yes. And none of the property owners raised that concern?
No, no, there have been no concerns raised.
So the suggestion was to limit the floor area of?
Clinics along with the already limitations opposed to neighborhood grocery convenience stores.
Okay.
Cafes, personal service shops, and retail.
So clinics are the only ones that are not restricted in floor area right now?
The others that do not have a floor area restriction are craft workshops, dog room, dressmaking and tailoring, galleries, and studios.
So does that, doesn't require a change in the wording of the motion then, right? It's just wording?
You would be, if you limit the floor area of the clinics, then it does, we have to say as presented and amended or revised by council, because the, what's on your agenda is showing something different than what you're going to be approving.
So I guess the question is, do you want to leave it as is, or do you want to make that change for the clinics?
I think, I think you know how I feel.
Got one. Is anyone else, I'm not hearing a lot of strained, like, a strong opinion on.
I'm fine with how it is.
I'm fine with how it is, okay. Not really hearing.
I'm fine with how it is.
Does, Nick, does the traffic authority get involved in this recommendation at all in looking at flow and where those cars are moving in and out of, as an example? Not at this point?
Not at this stage. There's a, so these go through site plan approval, these uses. So the traffic authority will be looking at safe driveway access.
Okay.
We have parking area design requirements that would need to be tiered to, even if there is no minimum parking.
All right, someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thurman, did you still want to make a motion?
The motion is on my screen. Okay. I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the proposed map and text amendments to the neighborhood commercial C7 zone and the special commercial C8 zone of the public planning strategy and land use bylaw, and schedule a public hearing for February the 12th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. in Council Chamber of the Town Hall, 60 Pleasant Street.
Thank you. Do I have a second or Councilor Caldwell? Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Oh, it's a good discussion though. I like that. Great. 7.3 is first consideration for 654 Glen Allen Drive Feldman Agreement.
If you click the dot on Doc, say the topic. Okay. So, an application was submitted to develop a master planning community at 654 Glen Allen Drive. The intent is to develop 450 units made up of townhouses and multi-unit residential buildings. Subject property is outlined on this map. It's outlined in red, and it's 15 acres in size. Subject property is vacant and was previously used as a Christmas tree farm. Glen Allen Drive is to the west of the site, and it is a collector's street. The property is bounded on the east by the town's wastewater treatment facility and another town-owned undeveloped parcel, and to the north by the Centennial Trail, the Bridgewater Baptist Church, and the four-story, 96-unit Drummond Hills apartment building. To the south of the site, there are single unit dwellings fronting La Haye Street, and the La Haye Athletic Fields occupy the lands on the opposite side of Glen Allen Drive. The application is to construct 450 residential units. The development proposal includes seven multi-unit buildings for a total of 414 units. Those multi-unit buildings would range between 25 and 94 units per building with heights between three and eight stories. The development proposal includes eight townhouse buildings as well with a total of 36 units. Other aspects of the development proposal will be discussed any more detail later in this presentation. Subject property is zoned as comprehensive residential, R3, on the zoning map of the land use bylaw. Surrounding zoning is single, two-unit residential, comprehensive residential, neighborhood commercial, institutional, industrial, and light industrial, and recreation. And this is the proposed site plan of the property. Site plan shows the proposed location of the seven multi-unit buildings and eight townhouse buildings. The applicant is proposing three new local-style public streets. One shown on Street A, as Street A, would connect Glen Allen Drive opposite the driveway to the La Haye Athletic Fields and extend to the rear of the subject property. The second and third proposed new public streets would form a loop back out to Glen Allen Drive. As mentioned, the land use bylaw, or LEB, permits 25 units per acre on this property through the development agreement process, which results in 375 units. However, an additional 75 units are enabled should 50% of those units be deemed affordable housing. This has resulted in a proposed 38 units of affordable housing. The number of required residential dwelling units to be affordable, 38, per the definition contained in the agreement, is based on the former municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw provision requiring affordable housing in 50% of any bonus dwelling units. In 2022, council approved amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw based on staff led proposed change from requiring affordable housing in 50% of any bonus density to requiring affordable housing in 100% of any bonus density. However, since this application had been deemed complete prior to the amendment's second and final consideration on October 11th, 2022, the former requirement of 50% of those additional units has been altered in their course of steps. I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about the definition of affordable housing. The draft development agreement includes a definition of affordable housing such that housing which costs less than 30% of before-tax household income or defined by CMHC or Province of Nova Scotia as affordable for purposes of a housing or financing agreement for a property party to a development agreement. This definition is a variance to the current land use bylaw definition that reads more simply, housing which costs less than 30% of before-tax household income. Staff will be bringing forth a housekeeping amendment, which is amendment by policy, to update the current land use bylaw definition to include the development agreement version and alternative assessment of affordability, such as mentioned, housing which costs less than 30% before-tax household income or defined by CMHC or Province of Nova Scotia as affordable for purposes of a housing or financing agreement for a party, property party to a development agreement. Staff recommend the definition amendment to better align with funding programs. The subject amendment by policy will be brought to council separately, but concurrently with the proposed public hearing date for this agreement, this development agreement, should council give first consideration this evening. The development agreement cannot vary the definition of the land use bylaw. Therefore, the concurrent amendment by policy to update the definition of the land use bylaw is necessary and would represent a condition of approval for the development agreement. Now getting back to the proposal. This is a proposed, this is the proposed phasing for the development. Phase one is shown in orange. It includes multi-unit building A, 94 units, and multi-unit building E, 86 units, both fronting Glen Allen Drive, as well as two, as well as two five-unit townhouse blocks. Multi-unit building A represents the tallest structure in phase one at six stories in height. Phase two is shown in purple and includes multi-unit buildings B and C, 43 units each, multi-unit building D, 70 units, and multi-unit building F, 53 units. Multi-unit building D represents the tallest structure, structure in phase two with six stories in height. Phase three is shown in yellow and includes multi-unit building G, 25 units, as well as six townhouse buildings, 26 units in total. Each phase is planned to be constructed within five years with completion timeline at 15 years. Developer would have to construct the phases in order, and street and service infrastructure in each phase would be constructed and accepted by the town prior to approval of any subdivision plan or issuance of any permits within that same phase. Public participation meetings held virtually on January 25th, 2022. Six members of the public attended, as well as three on behalf of the applicant. Particular issues raised included whether any areas were greater than 30% in slope and if they might need any engineered walls, whether an environmental impact assessment or equivalent had been completed, and whether there would be any concerns related to traffic impact. So staff have completed a policy analysis, analysis which can be found in the report. Comprehensive residential or R3 zone in which this development is located is focused on ensuring that most of the town's undeveloped land outside of the downtown core will support future residential development. As mentioned earlier, it permits multi-unit and collective style, multi-unit residential development up to 25 units per acre and up to 30 units per acre through the bonus density and mandated affordable housing. There are general and residential development policies that staff analyze, including those to minimize conflict between land uses, consider compatibility with adjacent properties, those supporting full range of housing options and styles, those requiring amenity space, promoting residential densification, encouraging context-sensitive residential infill, and encouraging compact urban form and adaptive reuse. There are policies concerning open space and environment, and the environment, including those to integrate with appropriate landscaping, incorporate requirements for amenity space, retaining existing trees, protecting water courses, and ensuring proper stormwater management. Policy regarding transportation includes a review of street network and active transportation infrastructure adequacy, those that relate to parking, requirement for sidewalks and walkways, those that require construction of new streets to town standards, prohibition of new cul-de-sacs and dead ends, except where environmental constraints or geographical constraints require them, and how our standards are designed to limit future residential street blocks in size. More specifically for transportation, the traffic impact study was required and reviewed the existing transportation network, the number of new trips that would be generated by the development and their estimated distribution into the system, the network, and how these trips would affect the level of service of the transportation network including nearby intersections. No significant concerns had been raised and associated with the traffic impact and adequacy of the street network. Glen Allen Drive is classified as a collector's street and is intended for higher volume, traffic, and larger vehicles. Town's engineering department did make a comment suggesting that the developers should also analyze the intersection at North Street and Aberdeen Road, in addition to the intersection at Glen Allen Drive and La Haye Street, which was part of the submitted traffic impact study. Planning staff suggests that analysis of the North Street Aberdeen Road intersection is outside the scope of responsibilities for this development as a result of relative proximity and current operational deficiencies known with that already signalized intersection. As such, there are no additional requirements within the draft DA to require that additional intersection analysis. Infrastructure is also analyzed when creating a development agreement. Within the draft DA, there are requirements that stormwater must be managed on the property so that surface water generated from the development cannot be more intensive than what previously existed. The servicing plan proposes wastewater servicing for 236 units directly to the wastewater treatment facility and 216 units via the downstream collection system. Those units using the Glen Allen Drive collection system for sanitary sewer would require a downstream wastewater capacity assessment prior to permit issuance. In summary, the draft development agreement outlines permitted use as a maximum of 450 residential units, and of those, a maximum of 414 would be multi-unit dwellings. Staff included a maximum number of multi-unit dwellings or units, as the proposal includes limited variety in unit types. So this gives the developer the flexibility to change their dwelling types in the future, but keep the number in multi-unit buildings capped to the proposal at hand. There's the 38 units required as affordable housing in the definition. The DA also states that a minimum of 20% of the units in phase one shall be more, shall be two or more bedrooms. So the housing types or the unit type shall be two or more bedrooms, 20% of those in phase one. Unit breakdown hasn't been determined yet, so staffing to ensure that a certain amount of units that would be suitable for larger families or more people in the first phase of development. Additionally, commercial uses on the property would be permitted but limited to an office use to a maximum of 400 square meters and neighborhood convenience stores on the corner of a collector's street, Glen Allen Drive, up to 93 square meters in commercial floor area. Those are based on the current policy and permissions for commercial development in the restrict, sorry, comprehensive residential zone by development agreement. Draft development agreement includes building characteristics for multi-unit dwellings and townhouses. These are in lieu of submitted elevation drawings, so staff devised urban design guidelines or requirements that with an aim to leave flexibility but also encourage engaging development. Those include for multi-units, the maximum height would be six stories. The ground four-story would be, would need to be at street line grade. This is included because there are some slopes on the property and staff wanted to avoid exposed foundations. All multi-unit buildings would include primary entrances on all facades oriented towards and abutting a public street. To ensure variation along the street, there would need to be varying vertical architecture on the multi-unit buildings. This means using different facade materials or projections to break up the building face. There is provision in the draft DA requiring windows and doors to occupy. There is provision in the draft DA requiring windows and doors to occupy no less than twenty percent, twenty-five percent, sorry, of any facade. And the multi-units abiding a public street would need a minimum six-foot step back at the base of the four-story on all facades oriented towards the street. As for the building characteristics for townhouses, there would also be a requirement for varying vertical architecture where units are separated by a common vertical wall, and grocers would not be permitted to project beyond the main, the front main wall of the dwell. These requirements aim to help create a more walkable, welcoming environment along the streetscape. The draft development agreement also outlines property characteristics. There's maximum front yard setback at twenty-six feet for multi-unit dwellings. This is to bring buildings closer to the street and create a more engaging street. There would need to be paid pedestrian access adjacent to driveways for the buildings that connect to the streets with their driveways, where it can be anticipated that people will walk to get to the building entrance. All units, all multi-units would need a paid pedestrian access between the building and the parking lot and the main entrances and the adjacent street to ensure safe space for people to walk. As mentioned, there would be three new public streets. Based on the town's design and construction standards, local streets require a sidewalk on one side, which is being proposed for two of the streets. And then Street A would exceed the town standard with sidewalk proposed on both sides. Additionally, the development proposal proposes a new municipal sidewalk to the town standard connecting Public Street A to the Centennial Trail and Public Street A to Public Street B. So that would be a new sidewalk on Glen Allen Drive on the side where there currently is not a cycle. Finally, landscaping would need to be in accordance with the submitted planting plan. Site preparation, including gloving, but excluding grubbing for trail development outside of the proposed street right of way, would not be permitted to occur until development permits are issued for the associated phase. Regarding parking, the draft DA specifies that a minimum of one vehicle or parking space is required for one unit. Site plan shows more than one-point-two-five spaces per one unit, which exceeds the minimum as specified in the draft development agreement and the land use by law. Bicycle parking would be, as per the land use by law, at space for every two units. The draft DA specifies that fifty to ninety percent of the total bicycle parking would need to be indoors. Regarding servicing, comprehensive design report would be required prior to any development on the subject property. And additionally, detailed submissions for building services are required prior to permit issuance for each building. Added fire protection would be required. The downstream wastewater capacity assessment would be required for those units discharging into the Glen Allen Drive collection system to the satisfaction of the town engineer prior to the issuance of any development permits for phase one and phase three, with those being the phases that include those units that would use the Glen Allen Drive sanitary collection system. And finally, disconnection of all unused service infrastructure currently installed and connected to the Glen Allen Drive's upgrade infrastructure must be removed prior to any occupancy permit granted for phase one. So that property is currently serviced by, I think it's eight sets of laterals, as it was assumed that it would be when Glen Allen Drive was constructed, developed for low-density development. So there are services there stubbed or capped at the property line, and our standard is any unused services must be removed back to the main. So decided to include that as a provision in the development agreement, mostly just to make that clear and visible. The development agreement includes clauses concerning stormwater management as mentioned, specifically that a detailed stormwater management report, including a grading plan, would be required, and additionally, there would need to be plans for each subsequent phase. This is to ensure the stormwater management plan is always up to date and specific as it is such a large area. A stormwater pond or similar facility would be required and would have to be complete prior to phase two. And that's based on the submitted stormwater management plan that's been received thus The substantive matters included in the draft development agreement include the permitted number of units on fifteen acres, so that four-hundred-and-fifty units, provision of affordable housing, and maximum yard setbacks. Also, there is a partial discharge clause to account for the long timeline in the development agreement. So for example, if phases two and three are not complete within the allotted timelines, council would have opportunity to make a decision to partially discharge the agreement. So with that, staff recommend that council give first consideration to the development agreements as contained in, as an appendix to the report, and schedule a public hearing during the regular council meeting on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you for the very detailed report, a lot of information. You know, it's important for council, obviously we have all the documentation, but the public, for the public to be able to go through all this in the PowerPoint and the time and efforts, very appreciated. Questions from council? Council call?
I believe the affordable housing is required by phase two. Do you know, are there any requirements for phase one, and do you know the developers' plans for affordable housing for phase one?
We don't have an account of how those units are going to be marketed. So the idea there is to make sure that we get affordable housing earlier in the development process and the requirement for those units to be in phase one or two. But beyond that, we don't have that level of information.
You raised the issue of commercial, has there been any suggestion that there would be commercial in there, or that's just a?
Yes, it's been part of the conversation. So there's the one building, it's Building A, that would be located at the corner of Glen Allen Drive, and the Street A runs from Glen Allen Drive through to the back of the property. The discussion has been that they would like to do some commercial or have a commercial component on the ground floor on the corner of that building. But again, we didn't get into the level of detail, or the applicant wasn't willing to get to that level of detail. So the development agreement basically just references what is permitted currently in the comprehensive residential zone by development agreement as it relates to commercials. So those are the offices and the small-scale offices and neighborhood convenience stores. But there hasn't been a clear intention on what that might look like.
One more, but two things.
Two more?
Sidewalks and perhaps less exciting laterals capped. Do we dictate the materials for sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, I couldn't find that, so I'm just curious. Cement, I assume?
Yep, it would be concrete to the town standard.
Okay. Cap laterals, could you restate that again or state it again?
Yeah, I mean, in this case with Glen Allen Drive, and the town built Glen Allen Drive fifteen-plus years ago, when often we build a public street, we'll service on speculation, say the service mains under the street, and then you extend laterals out to where you think properties may be developed and homes built. So Glen Allen Drive, laterals were extended and capped or stubbed at the property line waiting for connection at sixty-foot intervals. So when you see semi-detached or townhouses built on Glen Allen Drive, because at the time, two thousand and six, we thought, the market suggested singles, but as we've seen on Glen Allen Drive, every time there's a semi, you see a little cutout on the road, that's them installing a new, a second lateral for that duplex or semi-detached. But when there are unused laterals, then our standard is that that lateral that we may have put there, in this case we did, on speculation has to be removed back to the main. So if you're not using one of those laterals, if your, if the location doesn't work, you just don't need it because you're building a bigger building and you've basically amalgamated two of the conceptual lots, and you're removing one, you have to remove it back to the main. And that's to avoid leaks, because those laterals, if they're sitting there, there could be infiltration. Water can get into those laterals and then into our system, so we'd rather those laterals be removed if they're not being used.
Okay, I was, okay, that makes more sense. I was worried that we're just removing something that didn't have to be removed, digging up the road, repaving the road, getting this in the road.
That's the unfortunate part.
Yeah, okay, all right.
But it is, it's important to remove those unused laterals so that we can reduce the amount of infiltration into our sanitary system.
Perfect.
Is there been any consideration to put underground services on that project versus all this overhead wiring going down the Glen Allen? It looks like a nightmare. It's not very pleasant to look at. Has there been any consideration to go with underground cables for power and telephone?
We haven't spoken about the plan for power. That was left and is often left to the detailed design. And so that would be the next step, should there be a development agreement approved of this property, is detailed design for streets and services. And at that point, we would have that conversation. Our standard, we don't necessarily have provisions that encourage it, but I understand where you're certainly coming from with Glen Allen Drive and the number of poles. So that would be a conversation we have with the property owner. And if it's feasible, then perhaps we can go in that direction. But it hasn't been discussed to date.
And I would assume that transit will have a stop somewhere near there.
And transit does have a stop nearby by the Bridgewater Baptist Church.
So that gives an advantage to the transit system.
And that is, sorry, and that is one of the main reasons for the discussion around the sidewalk connection along Glen Allen Drive towards the Centennial Trail to get up to.
To bust out close. Great, thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Other questions or comments? Council call?
The development of this size would typically include some sort of green space, but it's adjacent to various parks and trails and ballfields and such. Is the developer contributing to the town's open space or?
So parkland dedication is an instrument of subdivision. Okay, so if you're subdividing, if you're creating lots, streets and lots on a large area of land or any lay area of land, you have to, you're required, or the subdivider is required, to either dedicate land or cash in lieu of equipment. In this case, there is no subdivision planned. So it's going to be subdivided by virtue of the streets, but that doesn't trigger the subdivision by law subdivision. Those are done through plan of survey. It's a different process, so it doesn't actually trigger the parkland dedication. So there is no parkland dedication requirement associated with this development, therefore no land or cash. We had some of those conversations earlier on. There was a suggestion that there could be subdivision. There was a proposed park in the middle of this development. Staff were engaged with the developer and suggesting cash rather than additional park space in that area because of the La Haye Athletic Fields Generations Act or Park. There's a lot of parkland in that area. What those parks need are cash. That would help in the development of those parks. In the end, their concept includes no subdivision, so parkland dedication is now not part of that conversation. We do require amenity space. We have amenity space requirements, and those are, that is built in, so the site has enough of the green area, balconies, that sort of thing, trails, that satisfy the land use by law requirement for amenity space, but no parkland required, therefore no land or cash.
Nick, in terms of the, and I know there is going to be a memo coming with some housekeeping amendments to our land use by law with respect to the definition of affordable housing. Just so that council's aware, our land use by law's definition is thirty percent of household income, no more than thirty percent of household income being spent on housing or rental would be considered affordable. Adding in the clause or a financing agreement or a third-party agreement with, an agreement with a third party for housing may vary that thirty percent a bit because the funding partners for affordable housing have, well, they're the experts in affordable housing, have a different definition or could have a different definition, such as CMHC, which may be ninety percent of market, is considered affordable as opposed to thirty percent of household income. So the measurements are different in terms of how it's determined. I just think it's important to kind of understand that it could be one or the other. One might be a higher test than the other. And the terms of those agreements can range from fifteen to twenty to thirty years depending. So that's also something to recognize, too, that it's not forever end and end. There are, and rightly so, markets change, conditions change, and they do have kind of end clauses in them.
So we'll be discussing that.
Yeah, I just said if you're, you should be aware of that before you give notice of first consideration.
Yeah, does everyone understand that, right? So right now, we have one definition, but we're really relying on, like you said, third-party who are experts in this to provide. Probably, you know, the definition will probably change.
Yes, and it enables that flexibility, too, because if those third parties come up with different definitions of how you measure affordability, they could set a market rate or a rate, it could be a percentage of market, it could be something totally different, that it allows for this DA to kind of move with that.
Everyone understands that part. Am I about to ask a question?
At the public hearing, yes.
You can always email someone around the table your question right now. Any other questions from? Someone prepared to make a motion? Supremayor?
Your worship, I'll make a motion. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the development agreement as contained in Appendix A of Document twenty-four dash zero zero nine for six forty-nine Glen Allen Drive, Pid number six zero three nine zero four two four, and schedule a public hearing during the regular scheduled council meeting on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four at six P.M. in council chambers of the town hall, sixty Pleasant Street.
I have a second or? Council call for further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motions carried. So thank you again, Nick, for all that work. And you know, this property has been, we've been excitedly waiting for this proposal to come before council and before the public. So again, February twelfth, public hearing for this project, and we'll see where the next stage is, but someone representative of developers here, so lots of work ahead.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you, Nick, for all your team and all your effort on this. Okay, we have correspondence for information, United Way, thank you letter for the additional transit passes. It's all well-used and transit continues to be well-used. Correspondence for action, letter from Regional Emergency Management Organization, request for letter of support to the province for the creation of a vulnerable person registry. So the five municipal units that are members of REMO have made this recommendation back to their councils. We would like, we would like the province to create a province-wide, it makes more sense to have a province-wide vulnerable person registry than to have it done differently by fifty different municipalities. So that's our goal. I know in our REMO meeting today, Mayor Bolivar Getz, who is president of the NSFM, said it's also on their agenda at the NSFM as well. But what is the wish of council? Council hander, thank you.
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee and forward a letter to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities and the Provincial Minister of Emergency Management in support of the creation of a province-wide vulnerable person registry.
Thank you. Second by? Thank you. Second by Supreme Mayor Fugier for the discussion. Questions? None? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Perfect, thank you. We are down to reports and recommendations, Business Retention and Expansion Report. And we will welcome.
Hi, Dan.
Donna Hat to the podium.
Excellent. I'm just going to see if we can facilitate this next step. I see me there, I think. We're going to full screen. How does that look? Over there, terrific. This is my first time with all of you officially at council, so it's, it's a real pleasure. And this project that we're reporting on today is actually something that started in the middle of 2023. So I have the pleasure of continuing the work that's been undertaken and ready to bring you a, a report. Business retention and expansion is actually an initiative that many communities engage in specifically to identify opportunities within their communities with existing businesses, looking at how best to help support them in their current endeavors, but also to look at opportunities and how we can strengthen that. It's a great reflection on all of our operations and, most importantly, looking at sustainability and growth. So this report, which was undertaken by Deloitte, had actually been directed by you folks. And this first page is just a bit of the background. Specifically for us, a hundred and eight interviews had been undertaken with a whole variety of businesses. These were randomly selected. It crosses all sectors and sizes, so there's a good variety inside the, the collection. The phone interviews, we had solid responses from those participants, so it gives us some really great insight. As you can see, the, the margin of error is, is pretty good, and Deloitte is suggesting that it's, it gives us solid foundations for, for drawing some conclusions. The, in July of 2023, this triage or this triage Business Retention and Expansion Report had been completed, and the reflections you'll see start to unfold, but what we had also done was combine some of our findings with that of the Business Retention and Expansion Survey that our colleagues in surrounding counties. And again, Bridgewater, as we all know, we are, our population is just under nine thousand, but the volume of business that takes place inside our, our town boundaries actually engages those from up and down the sub-shore and well beyond. So being able to bring in some of that data that's associated with our surrounding areas is really quite important because our viability rests with what else is happening in the surrounding area. And so what's good for us is also good for our neighbors and back and forth. And certainly in our hundred and twenty-fifth birthday year, it's, it's great to acknowledge that we are moving back and forth frequently. So you'll see that the municipality of the District of Lunenburg, municipality of Chester, and the region of Queens were also a part of a bigger, broader reach with about three hundred and eighty-eight surveys completed through that process. So you'll note as we go through this report, every once in a while I'll pop over and reference the regional. That's the regional and the collective, so we can see where we're sitting within, but also the strength and some of the, the areas that we need to work on as a region as well. So starting us right off about the ownership, based on those who were interviewed, again, I'll keep coming back to, based on the collection of a hundred and eight businesses that were interviewed, which is not by any means the full volume within our community, twenty-five percent indicated that they were externally owned and operated, and seventy-five percent were locally owned and operated. You'll note down in the corner pocket on the right-hand side, there was a slight variation there for regionally, and that eighty-eight percent were owned locally. So just a little bit of diversity inside that. Number of years operating, you'll see from our perspective within the town of Bridgewater, fifty-four percent, more than ten years already in play, so that's considered mature and they're evolving. Regionally, you'll see that we've got greater than ten years, it's fifty-seven. So we're, we're healthy. We've got a good, solid base of mature businesses operating and sustaining. We also have a nice piece coming in that they're just starting and getting on, onboarding through the process. Again, it's a great reflection of the volume of who we were surveying, so we've got a little bit of everybody inside there. Full-time employees, well, you will note that in our case, we don't have anyone at over a hundred. That's because one of our largest employers was not part of the survey. Why? Because when you take our largest employer and you place them inside this, all the results are skewed. So this is meant to be a better rounding. And again, it's not including all the businesses. But I did want to note for you that while it suggests we do not have any businesses with more than a hundred employees, that's not completely true. So it's just a little caveat tied to that. And again, you can see what's going on, but of note, in particular, the percentage of numbers of businesses outside of Bridgewater with only one employee actually goes up, you'll see that in the notes below, that it ranges from about twenty-five to fifty percent. That's not something that we wouldn't expect to see because of the small home-based businesses that are in our surrounding area. Where do they come to for their services? Quite likely here in the Bridgewater area. But you'll see how that, that range fits there, that in fact, within the town, we have larger businesses with more employees, more people coming and going by comparison to the counties and the surrounding areas. So it's just a part of being aware of who's out there and what's taking place. As far as renting or owning your properties, again, inside the town of Bridgewater, just shy of forty percent, that thirty-nine percent own their business versus the sixty-one percent that rent, again, slightly different. Seventy percent of the businesses within the collective region own their own property. Speaks to home-based businesses and related as well. So again, we've got an interesting combination, and it's a bit different when we're looking at our partners in and around the surrounding counties. Sources of sales, this is where it gets fun. Locally here in Bridgewater, we get to see where do people come to or where do they come from when they're shopping and supporting our businesses within our community. So you'll see right off the top, our neighbors immediately surrounding us, whether it be for Bridgewater, it's specifically the municipality of the District of Lunenburg, it's the town of Bridgewater, it's the region of Queens, the municipality of Chester, so you'll see where, as our, our slogan says, you know, or how we're known, we are the main street of the sub-shore. We do see that volume and it's reflected in the surveys from our, our businesses. What you'll also note inside there though is that forty, is that forty-three? I put my glasses on, get this right. Forty-four percent of the business, of the customers and sales for our businesses is coming from Halifax. So within that hour, hour and a half reach of the city and activity that's happening there. And then you'll see it, it starts to peter off a little bit, but we've got some great diversity. And even representing out internationally and to The Rock in Newfoundland. So there's an interesting mix within that collection. Regionally, as you might expect, the municipality of the District of Lunenburg represents the seventy-two percent collection inside that space, followed by the region of Queens, Chester, HRM, et cetera. So again, what's good to see here is that we're not an anomaly. The businesses inside Bridgewater are also seeing that kind of activities in their surrounding cohorts. So speaks to the volume from a marketing perspective. It also helps to reinforce where our targets are and how we can position our messaging. So again, we're not going after anomalies in, in the, in that case. Methods used by businesses to market to potential customers. Again, as we're looking at our, our forthcoming marketing strategies and trying to figure out what are the best tools, but it also allows us to take a peek and see what are businesses using and where is it different with other, other businesses in the same jurisdiction? So in our case, turns out social media, as you might expect, continues to pop up. Our businesses increasingly, you'll see Bridgewater is represented by the blue line, noting that we, we tend to be more active in marketing activities, or the businesses that were surveyed are more active in a number of marketing activities. Facebook, website, I was really excited to see website. That's an important piece. If you don't have a website, it makes it really difficult to present yourself in market. So knowing that they've got that base there, growing that, diversifying, ensuring that they're using a variety of tools to drive traffic to their websites, capture the data, how are they analyzing it and turning it back into new leads, and reflecting on the relevant components there are really important as well. Print, I know we've got a number of print publications, and we even have our newsletter that is a print publication that's issued. We don't sell ads, but print is still available and folks are supporting that and using it as a channel. That'll make a lot of sense when we start to look at our population demographics. Not everybody's online. Some people still really like the print, and seeing our businesses are still using that print channel is, is an important tool. Radio is still in there, LinkedIn, TV, and other, those are things like, and you'll see and noted, not as many of our businesses cited it, but certainly regionally, folks talking about word of mouth, Airbnb, business cards and referrals, referrals. Never underestimate the power of referrals. And perhaps it just didn't slide into this because they don't buy that part specifically. It's just a part of the general marketing activity. Continuing from there, looking at performance of employees or, or business performance based on employees. Over the past twelve months, did the total number of employees in your company, did it decrease? Did it remain the same or increase? On the slide portion here to the left, twenty-five percent demonstrated that, or cited that they increased their, their number of employees in the past twelve months. Looking ahead, another twenty-five percent said, we will be growing. So that's labor pool, labor market demand, we'll be growing. That's very positive for us in our region. And again, looking regionally, you'll see them in the green slides, in the green components of the, the slide, showed positive growth. We're not seeing declining. If we were sliding off to the bottom side of the scale, we'd be in a position of concern. But we're healthy, there's positive growth happening there. From revenues perspective, again, in this case, Bridgewater, the businesses cited fifty-three percent saw revenues grow in the past twelve months, with another sixty-three saying, in the next twelve months, they're going to grow again. Really positive, great vibes for us. And again, we're seeing that same kind of trend reflected within our region. Healthy, vibrant, and it's in a growth stage, which is perfect. Business performance overall, looking at attitudes and how people are feeling about business, doing business here in our town. There's a net positive of twenty-nine percent, but thirty-seven percent said they felt more positive about doing business here. So that's a collection of good news. Same thing happened for the, the region with, I think that is twenty-five percent saying that they felt very, more positive about doing business here. Puts us in a good position of a, you know, whether we're looking at contracting, remaining stable, or looking towards expanding, when you're average out the numbers, we're in that upswing, which is again, the news. I don't, you know, we've been very blessed with progressive, engaged, and productive opportunities in our community. This speaks to all of that. Now comes some of the fun stuff. These were fun when we started to look at the numbers. A statement being asked and interviewees needing to respond. I would recommend Bridgewater to another business looking to expand or relocate. Ninety percent agreed. Ninety percent of those businesses somewhat or strongly agreed that they would do that. There's some powerful folks out there in our community to help us continue to grow and attract the kinds of businesses that we're looking for. They'll also be assisting us in attracting additional employees because they'll be a part of that greater resource. Again, regionally, eighty-seven percent said somewhat or strongly agree. So again, everybody's happy with how things are starting to unfold here, and that's a positive way to step out. Just gonna take a step back. I thought I missed one. Nope. So in general, net promoters, we have about a thirty-five, a thirty percent of the folks go Team Bridgewater. They'll be jumping on board and giving us a hand as we start to chart our course forward. Not that we haven't been already heading in that direction, but we can onboard it, or onboard them and engage them in part of our activity. The statement, I am satisfied with Bridgewater as a place to own and operate a business. Ninety-four percent were satisfied. They were somewhat satisfied or very satisfied with Bridgewater as a place to do business. So again, that speaks volumes. Regionally, it's at ninety percent. So same as the, the previous statements, we're in a good position going forward. We'll be turning and transitioning some of these statements into some great pieces within the business community to invite them to acknowledge this and help us be champions with it. Now we're coming to some of the satisfaction levels. Yes, we wanted to know on a scale of, of percentage, where did you land and how did you feel about various aspects of doing business in Bridgewater? So we can start at the top and keep it, zoning, they were happy with that. Availability of industrial space, they're happy with that, but really part of the business retention and expansion and it should have is to look at the bottom side. Where are the areas that we should be looking at to, to attack, focus, and mitigate unhappiness in the business community? Specifically, I, I've just tried to highlight those slightly in yellow. At the very bottom is no news to, to anyone around these tables. Availability of adequate housing, twenty-six percent is our rating. We'd like to see that boost up, but we know that will come with time. Hearing the, the development agreement proposal that just came before you, et cetera, all of that will help to contribute. We've got a lot of potential coming onboard with housing at this point in time. It's still just not fast enough for our business community, as we know it isn't for the general community. So nothing new there, but reiterates it for us and helps to strengthen our position as we go forward to request support and assistance from various levels of government. Availability of health and medical services is down there in number two as least satisfied. Availability of skilled labor and unskilled labor. Before going to the skilled labor component, the availability of health. I believe we heard at the close of 2023, we had thirteen new physicians and health providers, healthcare providers come to our community, so that's thirteen new. This was done before those numbers came through, and I know that we continue to entertain and welcome new potential physicians and healthcare service providers to our community on, on a weekly basis in conjunction with our partners. So hopefully we'll get to see some movement on that. When it comes to the skilled and unskilled labor, that comes to drawing people into our community. Again, not a new piece. We even, we're challenged with that here at, at the town of Bridgewater, looking to fill opportunities that we have vacant for a period of time. So how do we approach those, looking at the skilled trades, working with labor market immigration, et cetera? We've already begun tackling some of those pieces to look and look for opportunities. And our business community are leaning on each other in different ways as well. So we'll continue to look at how can we work with the business community to grow the number of folks coming in. But again, we're bringing folks in, they need to have housing. If we get them here, they also need healthcare. So it is all part and parcel of that puzzle, but we'll keep pushing forward. Commercial space, boy, we are getting limited on commercial space. Sometimes we don't think we are, but then it becomes very real. So again, looking at where, where can we be creating some space, where is that demand, and where we might be able to satisfy it? Municipal property taxes, fifty-six percent. So we're about halfway there. Folks are feeling, yeah, it's there, not fully excited about it, but it isn't, it didn't land as the number one piece that they were, they were unsatisfied with. So keeping that in mind as we go forward, and I know we've got budget discussions and deliberations coming up as well. So you can see those, reflect on those, and certainly I know folks who, in our business community, will be looking at those to see where they may be able to find solutions or propose new business opportunities to tackle some of them. This, I'll leave it here for you, but these are the priority matrices, matrices, looking at overall, what are higher priorities for the business community? Taxes are always a concern. They have to pay that bill and it's a part of business operations. And you can see the top five there as well for yourselves. Nothing new there that we wouldn't expect. Overall, we look at the Business Health Index. On average, you'll note here, when everything is all tossed in, all of these pieces of details are tossed in, where do we stand nationally against national grading? We're slightly above. We're at seven hundred and seventy-seven versus the seven fifty-six. It's not huge, but across a whole collection of elements to be graded against, we're standing pretty solid. I, I know you folks are quite proud of where we've come and how we've been tackling things, and the spirit within our community seems to be following along. Regionally, we're just shy of the national average, just shy of it. So still very much in solid position. Here, looking at the future plans in the next twenty-four months, it's a great news story again. It'll be our role and certainly mine in conjunction with the balance of our team to look at how do we help facilitate these things moving forward. But we've got seventeen businesses in total looking to expand. We have no businesses looking at downsizing in Bridgewater. Great news. Plans to relocate, we had seven, but guess what? They're not relocating outside of town for the most part. They're relocating to other locations because of expansion needs. So there are a number of initiatives underway that way. We have some of the business contacts, when they completed the surveys, they did not have to provide contact information and specifically revealing who they were and what their challenges were. So we don't have all of those details, but we have enough that we can poke it in around. And I have already been in contact with a handful of these folks just to see where you're sitting with this and how might we be able to assist. We had two identify that they may have plans to close in more than six months. So they still don't close, they still, but they're considering it. And I know that we do have, for example, Greco was, has recently closed. So we have some movement that's taking place, but that is certainly overcome and to the benefit of seeing more businesses opening than closing in our community. Plans to sell, we've got some folks that are looking at selling, and one, I think, may be in transition now, but we'll see how those things come to play for them. may be in transition now, but we'll see how those things come to play for them. So it's all positive. For your reference, and you can take a look at this later, I also provided the regional lens, so it sits in there and ready for you. Again, this is just a triage flag for us internally, it's 17 businesses that say, we're going to keep going and grow and look at more opportunities, so we'll be following up with them and a few of those red flags. Part of the process was, again, this was done in July of 2023, or closed in July of 2023, we were asking them, have you been interacting with council, have you been interacting with staff, how does that been, how's that been feeling for you? So it will be always top of mind for us, the staff, as it is for everyone on the team, but especially myself, in the outreach to ensure that the business community knows that on your behalf, I'm there to reach out, assist, try to jump over hurdles, get through process as much as possible to keep the gateway open for them to continue growth and activity. The final question that was covered was about whether or not they're in our business directory. Whether you folks, I know all, actually, all you folks know about it, but folks that might be listening in, we launched ExploreBridgewater.ca, and within that is a business directory opportunity. And increasingly, whether it be from the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, we've been getting the word out that we've got this business directory, and we're using it as a tool to help enlighten folks about what we do have here, as a quick and easy reference. It can get outdated, so if anyone is, if they're on the list and they see, or in the directory and they see something that needs to be corrected, all they need to do is reach out. If they look within the directory and they're not there, there's a form, all they have to do is fill it out or give us a call and we'll take care of that. So that kind of brings it to a wrap. This is where we are currently with the business retention and expansion, a lot more work to be done, but it's, but 94% saying they would strongly suggest that someone relocate here and set up a business. Congratulations, Bridgewater, you folks, as well as all of our residents and our businesses. We've been doing a really great job from that perspective. Any questions?
Everyone take a breath. Any questions for Donna?
Go Team Bridgewater.
And that's, I mean, that's great information. I actually like, really like the format that it's presented in as well, it's kind of easy to understand, follow through. Do they do that every, is there a set schedule that Deloitte does that? Is this a one-time thing that they?
Well, it's it's us, you know, we trigger when we want to do it. It would be, it would be who of us to look at, maybe in five years, just to go back and take another look. Is there more data we would love to have? I, again, I've been diving into labor market and immigration information, trying to get specifics in, and where are the holes and the gaps, how do we tackle them, where, what are the future projections going to be looking like? We could get into those kinds of questions with businesses as well and get very targeted, and maybe that's what we want to do as a triage in between a five year. But setting out those paces so that we can reflect on, are we, are we still on the same wavelength? Where are the other opportunities? So we don't have it in play right now for your, for your upcoming fiscal year, but I think we would look at it as in another five.
Yeah, that's great. Any other thoughts on that? Oh, Councilwoman.
Just to thank the businesses that were involved for helping us collect that information.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know there was, there was quite a list, to have 108 of them, spend on average 12 minutes sharing this kind of information, and some being brave enough to put their names associated with that. We'll go find some of those Team Bridgewater folks, but also dive in to tackle some of the issues from inside.
No, that's great, we appreciate that, thank you. Great.
Great.
All right, 10.2, remuneration for mayor and council, so this is something that my policy has done, this is an election year, in case you hadn't known, for every municipal unit in Nova Scotia, there will be a fall municipal election. And so our current policy is that within six months of that, we either review it or we don't review it.
Yes. The policy has a procedure for review, where you set up a citizen-based committee, and that committee does a deep dive into remuneration and makes a recommendation back to the town council for consideration. And that's all done prior to the municipal election and really sets out the remuneration for the upcoming council term. So council term to start in late October 2024. So I had Julie do just a quick, quick review just of towns in Nova Scotia. This is, of course, based on the information that we could glean from them, it's all 2023 figures, and so that gives you kind of an idea in terms of where where Bridgewater compares to other towns, and again, remembering that not all towns are equal in terms of like complexity or issues that they're dealing with. And there's all kinds of things that can influence remuneration, like number of committees, the size of council, all those aspects. So that's just kind of there to give you a, as I say, an idea of where remuneration is now. The policy right now for council's remuneration, council reviewed the remuneration in 2020 prior to the last municipal election and made some adjustments. And in that policy, we included a provision that it would, remuneration would be adjusted by CPI on an annual basis with the intent that it would keep up with inflation. So that is adjusted on an annual basis as well. So it's here, as the mayor said, we're in kind of heading into some pre-election stuff, and this would be one of them, that we require some direction from council with respects to whether you wish to do that review or not. And your policy states that you either do the review or you can determine that the remuneration as it exists now for the policy can be the remuneration for the upcoming council term as well.
What is the wish of council? Are there any questions, Councilwoman Thorburn?
When I come on council in 2012, Andrew was there, and Jennifer, we didn't even, I don't remember reviewing it to 2020, I know we didn't get a raise to 2020. It was the same pad. There was no CPI, there was no nothing, we just, and we accepted that because it seemed like a pretty good deal. But when the review was done, and with the add of CPI annually, that pretty much gears here and tees us that we're going to stay with the market value. So I don't see the need to go into another review. I think what we got is pretty good deal.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman McDonald?
The review that was done last time was very in-depth. There was a lot of time and consideration put into it and a lot of rationale along with it. So, you know, four years is pretty short for for that kind of work to be redone. I think we're we're pretty, pretty much where we we need to be, and there's no huge discrepancies between the municipalities, so I'm satisfied to keep it the same as well.
Deputy Mayor? Yeah, and I echo the comments of both Councilwoman McDonald and Councilwoman Thorburn. I guess, as I've all said, it was in-depth and thorough with having a committee, and as Councilwoman Forman just mentioned, both keeping in place with CPI was was brought in at this last review. Just one thing I want to mention with regards to fees for councillors for expenses, I don't know if that can be separately, like per diems or whatever, or meal allowances and things like that.
We follow the staff.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of.
Yeah, so right now, I believe it's, our travel is based on provincial, mileage rates and our per diems, I believe, were adjusted to reflect that as well.
Yeah, but I just know at the last conference and talking to some other councillors from other municipalities, they had different allowances for for meals that people get.
Yeah, that that would be separate from this.
Yes, that's, that's correct, we would review that under the personnel policy.
Make a motion?
Sure, yes, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 64, annual council remuneration adjustment, confirm that the rate of remuneration, keep tripping on that one, for the present term of council shall also be the rate for the 2024-2028 council.
Thank you, seconded by Councilwoman Thorburn. I'll just, I'll just echo that, you know, just for a little bit more detail for those watching, so 2020, prior to the last election, we had three citizens, two of them in, came from financial backgrounds, so an accountant and a banker, and another citizen who spent a lot of time, did a lot of research, asked a lot of questions. So it was a citizen committee. So I know that normally people think committees and they think, you know, we're all on committees, so there were no, there were no members of council on that committee, so they did a lot of research. So that's the committee that we're referring to. So I just wanted to give a little bit more context on that, so. Okay, we have a mover and a seconder, any further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. 10.3, we have the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report. And again, just a reminder for the public that all the documents that we have are online on the town website, if you go under Town Council, and then I think it's under, like, Meet the Council or Our Council, and then you'll see Council Agenda and Minutes. So under the agenda, I looked at it yesterday, there is 273 pages, but we have the same 273 pages. So in there is the is the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report for December, and I mean, I say it every, every month we get the report, I don't know how they do it, but they do it because they're amazing, so I would encourage the public to read that. If there's a way to be able to help and be involved, that'd be great. Also, is the the Building Inspection Report for November is included in our agenda package. So things continue to just kind of motor along Bridgewater, and as we know, the surrounding community as well, as things are busy. So if you have any, any questions, you can reach out to staff through the CIO on those. 10.5, if to give notice, consideration to appeal the original Policy 77 and grants to organization policies.
Yeah, so staff will give council a detailed presentation on the changes at the next meeting tonight. Tonight's purpose is to give notice that at the January 29 council meeting, council will consider and debate, consider and debate amendments to that policy to address some of the requests that councils had with respects to operational grants for some organizations.
Okay, so I'm prepared to make that motion. Councilwoman Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that the January 29, 2024 council meeting, consideration will be made for repealing of Policy 77, Grants to Organizations, originally approved on November 24, 2014, and subsequently approving a new Policy 77, Grants to Organizations, as presented in Document 24-007.
Thank you, seconded by Senator Tanner, further discussion? None, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. 10.6, Bridgewater Curling Club donations request grant through the community, designated community fund, so as with the other organizations that utilize this fund, donations are made on their behalf to the to the town, they need a tax receipt for that, and then we disperse those funds as requested by the organization. So it's just a reminder, it's not the town constantly giving money to the Curling Club, it's money that the Curling Club has had donated by the public in their name, so. Is someone prepared to make a motion for that? I saw Councilwoman Caldwell first, sorry.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $500 in accordance with the Designated Communities Fund, Policy 97, to the Bridgewater Curling Club for two capital projects planned for this summer.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier, further discussion? All of you in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Here's another giving notice, so 10.7, Amendments to Policy 89, Fees for the Colombariums.
It's just proposing some revisions to the fees with respects to Colombariums and reflects that we have a new one that we've recently placed on site. So these, again, will be reviewed in detail at the January 29 meeting if council gives notice to make.
Okay, is someone prepared to make that motion? Councilwoman McDonald?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that at the January 29, 2024 council meeting, Amendments to Policy 89, Fees with respect to changes to fees associated with niches and burial lots within Brookside Cemetery as outlined in Document Number 24-0011.
Thank you, seconded by most people. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Now we're moving. 10.8 is the discussion notes from December 4, so again, these would be online as well. In that meeting, we had also heard from Donna and her presentation on the business expansion and retention, the survey, we also talked about our master infrastructure plan, Phase 3 report, all very, very detailed. Staff, staff are just so busy. So that's, that's in there for everyone to review. And then we're down to new business, Region 6 Budget for 2024-2025.
Okay, so this is being presented to the parties to Region 6. The budget requires that at least 75% of the partners, representing at least 50% of the population that those partners represent, approve the budget. The budget is here before you, and it just shows that there is a slight increase to the budget year, year over year, and it's, it's not, not as significant or substantial increase, but it means the Town of Bridgewater's contribution to that budget approved is shown to be 14,563, 43.
So Councilwoman Thorburn, you like to count it?
Just a few details. Region 6 has 12 municipal units ranging from the municipality of Barreton and including West Hans through Chester. And each year, we, as a group, the General Service Board and each municipal unit pays into a fund. And last year, I think it was around $10,000 that we paid in. So 24, 25, like CEO said, it's 14,563, 43. And on the estimated value of $266,327, coming back to the municipal service board, $66,129 over 24.3% of that is coming to the Town of Bridgewater. So it's a pretty good deal, which means is, we're paying in funding a dollar 66 per person, and we're getting $7,052 back. I call that a pretty good investment, which means we get a net return of $5,86 per person to the Town of Bridgewater. And for 2023, like I said, it was $11,560. So it's a pretty good deal, and we have a lot of stuff going on now, but this is all based on diversion credits, it's not based on really population, and the dairy credits are added together, and we're getting paid for that. So yes, there's an expense, but what we get back is more than adequate for what we're investing, so it's a pretty good deal. I just want to make sure that people understood that. It's one of the very few deals where you pay your less and you're getting back.
Yep, no, I appreciate, I was counting on you explaining that, because I think it's important. You know, Region 6 isn't something that most of the public knows about or thinks about. They probably wonder why we're paying into something, but, you know, they do education and talk about the diversion credits and things like that, and they're working on EPR, and, but there is a return on our investment, that is, makes it well worth it.
And we did get, if I may say, quite a few collectible containers, $0.50 through divert Nova Scotia in regional chairs.
Perfect. Are there any questions on their budget? Hearing none, or Councilwoman Thorburn, would you like to make a motion?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Region 6 Intermunicipal Committee and approve the 2024-25 Region 6 Budget, in the total amount of $152,921, as presented in Document 24-013.
Thank you, seconded by Senator Tanner, and as Councilwoman Thorburn read in the motion, that the overall budget is 152,000, our portion of that is just over 14,000, so. Okay, we have a mover and a seconder, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. This brings us to the end of the first meeting of 2024. We do have an in-camera meeting following this for contract negotiations. So with further ado, I have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Tanner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier, we are adjourned, thank you. Thank you.